Your committee wants to, at the end of every meeting, approve the changes made and take that vote and say we collectively approve of these changes or we...
How are we giving our opinion?
And so then, then what Mr. Rule is saying that you could, at the end of this meeting, decide we would like to approve all of these changes and direct someone to draft a final document to be sent to whoever, or you can, it's in there, let me have you with the guy. Or you could say, we accept these changes, we would like to see the final copy in our next meeting for review. That's the two options.
Yeah, that's standard practice normally on committees, this one and other ones. You don't vote on a project that is discussed and written up or changed in the meeting. It's always directed to staff, or at least for me, it has always been directed to staff to take our changes, come back with a final document.
So we don't introduce the final document though?
You produce a document, you produce a recommendation that goes to council, and that is what you're producing. Because in that letter of recommendation that you're going to send to council, you're also going to have a final version of the ordinance that you have voted upon.
Right.
And so in order to see that final version that you're actually sending to council, you should have that final version in front of you versus a mock write-up from the ad hoc committee versus the ORC committee.
Which is what I produce and give to the liaison. In other words, after this meeting, if we approve whatever changes we approve, I will produce that document and give it to liaison. And then she will put it into the agenda? No, she does what?
Okay, Mr. Miller, Jim, you have a decision to make, how you would like to run your committee. Your options are, would you like to keep track of the committee documents? Or would you like to direct staff to do that? Would you like the committee to vote at the end of every meeting to accept the changes discussed in that meeting, to keep that record and that track? Or would you like to just collect the changes, meeting to meeting, and then once you have finished your discussion, would you like to take that one vote? These are your procedural choices that have been presented based on other things. When, you know, so just take this, put this aside, these are the procedural choices, and you as the chairperson get to make these calls, this is your...
Sure, let me ask the mayor while he's here, okay? Can I give direction to staff to go ahead and produce the final draft of our agreements?
Right, so the way I understand it, and I'm, you know, tell me if I'm wrong, but you know, some of the discussion on some of these drafts can go over the course of a couple meetings. And people, okay, so we come back, we're going to look at it again, you know, give it a some thought, the subcommittees come back, found some other stuff, put that in. So you have another meeting, another discussion, I mean, now it's a little further along, or maybe it's as far along as we needed to go.
Well, we're trying to avoid that. We're trying to avoid that. That's what the subcommittee was created for, to do a lot of background research as to what the definition of fireworks is by going to state and whatever, and providing that information.
But then that still comes back, that subcommittee brings that back to the full committee.
And they may or may not want it.
And they, if there's further discussion, you may or may not get to, you may decide, hey, you know what, we're not quite there yet, you know, let's go back to the drawing board, come up with some other stuff, come back next month and do it. But at some point, you know, you've got a document that is ready to say, okay, we're ready to present this as our final thoughts, you know, we've got all the red line version, you know, we've got all the green notes and the red notes, you know, at some point, it's okay, we're ready to call this, you know, ready to get rid of all the red lines, say, okay, here's a final document. You know, we're ready to say, this is our work product as a committee. Now, you know, I would want staff, if staff is ultimately going to have to turn it into a, the same ordinance, or change it in ordinance, or move it over to the PNC, the more staff knows about it, you know, the easier it is for them to facilitate that process, for me.
Again, we're creating a very big problem, whether it was any at all, because the only reason our procedure was my directive was because I was under the impression that I was not to give staff instructions.
Yeah, I don't really know.
You can't, as an individual, just like I can't as an individual, just tell staff to do stuff. Your collective body can vote and say, we would like staff to finalize this document. Staff provides the service of finalizing documents.
That's fine, if they want to type up the final document, that's okay. I don't have a problem with that. Again, if you tell me it's okay for this committee to submit to, not to the liaison, but to submit to the city manager, that's fine.
My perception has always been that the committee, through the chair and vice chair, staff and liaison, you know, work closely together on how they move, sort of, how the rep moves through the snake, you know? But they all, you know, everybody's sort of involved, because everybody's going to have a hand in it someplace. And so, and so like, whether it's creating the agenda or submitting, you know, final documents to council, you know, as work product, you know, it's all kind of the same thing. And, you know, no, I don't want, I don't want anybody to call up the city attorney and get advice without going through, you know, me or staff or somebody, that's not money. But, you know, we pay these to, to support, you know, the work of all the committees and to make it as easy as all, no problems here, you know, it's like, you're doing, you're doing, you know, a lot of work, and you're paid about as well as we are.
We're paying you in pie.
Yeah, yeah, paying in pie.
So we would go to...
Well, this is the way it's going to work. What we'll do is, after the workshop or an ordinance, we'll then vote. You can vote to either accept the revisions as we discussed, you can vote to send it, you want to do more research or whatever, send it to next month's meeting, you can do that. Or you can voice objections, even though you may be in the minority about it. Now, what will then happen is, if we vote to move it on down the line, we give it, instead of to Deborah, we give it to the city manager. And he will type up a final document, and then we'll have to, next month, vote to accept that final document, okay? Just like we do the minutes, okay? But I will check it to make sure that it complies with what we discussed.
The reason why the voting for, to accept changes is important to me, in my opinion, is for example, in last meeting, we had at least one committee member that didn't want one of the changes and disagreed with them. Now, your committee does have the option of voting down proposed changes, and that might occur post-discussion. So that's where you get into that snap flu, is if you don't accept changes after the meeting to get to the next meeting, you can, you can end up with basically unapproved changes moving forward into future drafts. So that's why that consistent voting is so important, because it basically says, everybody's on the same page, or close enough, good, let's take another step forward. Without that, you're, you're not really giving anybody direction to do anything.
Right. The difference, see, here's the, here's the connotation to that, is that if you do do it, and then you come and say, okay, this is what you voted on, and you say, no, it's not. We had this big long discussion about, did we vote for this? Did we say he or they or whatever, and that's why, do what you want. I'm just here to try to help, and so I'm here to help you, so you do whatever you want, and we'll do according to whatever you say. I'm just trying to get suggestions to move the process along more easily, but that's fine, whatever. We need to get the...
No, I'm content to be up. The only thing, again, our attitude is, we are not producing a final draft of anything, in effect, for the ordinances. We're giving our opinion, we're a citizen committee that gives our opinion, okay?
Just like, and then...
It's assumed that it's going to go through, like you said, the rat through the snake, and so it will go through other staff.
Every, every, I'm sorry, every committee gives their, gives their opinion. This is no different than PNC or the Hartboard, they all produce recommendations to the city council.
And they often choose to ignore it?
Or accept it, so the fact that, oh, ORC is not that important, or whatever we do, it doesn't really matter, that is not, it is very important to city council.
Yeah, so, white haired gentleman. So, so to me, you know, I'm looking at this and looking at the difference between, say, like, ORC and PNC, right? So you have, you have planning and zoning, and they are responsible for, for, you know, ordinances, when actual ordinances. But ORC is doing, saying, you know, we looked at that ordinance, and, you know, we think it could use some tweaks, we're not going to rewrite it, you know, but, you know, here's the things that we think need to be changed, and put that over, you know, get that going, and it goes, okay, well, yeah, we agree, let's go ahead and send that to PNC, we're drafting it to more of an ordinance form. So you're right in that, in that you are, you are making recommendations based on your, on your, you know, mission as a committee, which is to review our ordinances and make sure they're clean and neat and easy to understand and do all that. But it's like, but your job is to play with them, or to come up with new ones, unless, it's to suggest new ones maybe, but, you know, to do the actual work, you know, of writing an ordinance. We've been, we've been told on council that, hey, you know, y'all wrote pretty good ordinances, but that's not really your job, you know, when you're going to write an ordinance, you know, you want, you have staff and council, I mean, not council, I mean, legal council, you know, to put off whereres is in the right places, right? So it's like, it's like, y'all are doing a great job, and if it's just, if it's just a matter of, you know, a sort of semantic of where it goes, just keep doing what you're doing, doing, you're doing it well.
Okay, and then I note, 248, so the order of the RBC new committee. Could you call Rose please?
Chairperson Jim Miller.
Here.
Vice Chair Joe Brinko.
Here.
Member Karen Duncan. Member Donna Hector.
Here.
Member Randy Reiner.
Here.
Councilman Deborah Hines.
Present.
And alternate member, and then the other is tapped. Thank you.
Okay, quorum presence, need of a comment?
Yes, sure.
All right, let's move to the consent calendar, approval of the regular meeting minutes from March 7th and from April 4th.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes. One in a time? You have to be one.
No, you can do both.
I draw both out of the country, we're not on the fourth floor. So I can approve one, but on one, or I can abstain above?
We can do them separately.
Okay, a motion per person.
Okay.
Kansas.
They're Monday, it's great, okay. So the motion is to approve the meeting minutes from March 7th. Vice Chair Joe Brinko. Member Karen Duncan.
Where's the word I said, hi?
Yeah.
Hi.
Yeah.
Or you, yes, yeah.
Either one, it could be positive, you know.
Right.
Member Karen Duncan, yes. Member Donna Hector.
Yes.
Member Randy Reiner.
Yes.
And Chairperson Jim Miller.
Hi.
Okay, we need approval for April 4th.
You know, I want to move on to you.
I love it, you're good.
I make a motion, we approve the minutes from April 4th.
Second. Kansas.
Member Karen Duncan.
In staying.
Member Donna Hector.
Yes.
Member Randy Reiner.
Yes.
Chairperson Jim Miller.
Hi.
Vice Chair Joe Brinko.
I'm staying.
Okay, moving on, report from the council liaison.
Well, council decided to send the work that you all did in the last meeting to the ad hoc committee, so because, because they're working on zoning already, and a portion of what y'all approved was about zoning, so that was sent to them to incorporate in those updates, and that will basically go to PNC, to the lawyer for a report, and then back to council, that zoning chapter, so those changes are in motion. The other component was the health and sanitation, and that was also sent to ad hoc work group to work on and clean up a little bit, and then it will also go to legal review when that is complete, and then we'll come back to council. That one does not have to go to PNC because it doesn't fall under their umbrella of land use in particular, so...
Was the specific request to do something about reviews included?
It was in your report, yes, and it has made it through the channels. That report travels with, essentially, the ad hoc work group, as to, you know, because you're in an RMI, has completed the work on all the other chapters, but zoning, zoning is in phase two right now, and then after that, likely that group will take a break, and then the health and sanitation is essentially kind of just some administrative stuff, and that'll be cleaned up and pushed forward again to legal at that point, per council's request, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, city manager. Just asking if you can have a report.
So, we'll talk about the power of...
No.
He does not.
Okay. I have a quick question too, on a, what about the community, community homes? What did they say about...
That was part of health and sanitation, and council hadn't even, they didn't delve into it in the workshop, essentially, they just kept it over to the ad hoc work group, which is so funny because it's two of y'all. I, I agreed to that motion mostly because at that point, we had been in the meeting for a long time. But what, what has to happen is, they want legal counsel to review it, so basically, I'm just going to take that document, like, for us, and clean it up so that we can give it to legal, and legal can...
But like Randy said, it's just name wording, right?
Yeah, it's just the rest of the chapter, it wasn't just that portion, and city manager Rule was pretty adamant about always just having legal review everything. We've debated or discussed, the whole health and sanitation chapter involved more than just the community homes, that was just part of it.
Yeah, there were a whole lot of things in health and sanitation that were added to...
So essentially, because of those additional things beyond what we should basically state code...
Community homes cannot zone.
That is, that is accurate, yes.
Yeah, and nothing to do with...
We're, yeah, we're, yeah, yeah. So, sorry, the rest of health and sanitation, the community home thing, all of this, they want to go, to have legal review, whether or not that is a special request outside of it being put into a meeting packet, I still haven't really understood, because we've had both of those discussions where we've talked about if something's in the packet, legal should be reviewing it, or if it's like specially sent to them for an additional review, I'm not really clear on, and frankly, that's above my pay grade at this point, and I just want to get the work done, and then we'll deal with that kind of stuff, so, but yeah, your work moved through the channels, council didn't disagree or shoot any of it down, it's essentially been sent on the next step of the trip.
The third component of zoning has been sent back to that zoning review, but health and sanitation doesn't live in zoning.
I know. The motion council made was just to send it all to the ad hoc work group.
Can we send it back?
We don't, we don't need to, essentially, that ad hoc work group is just, I'm just going to fix the document, and because all that needs to happen is it's going to be put in, be put into a format that's user-friendly and ready to go.
Ah, okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So just put it in a more ready-to-go format, and we'll give it back to them. And I know that you're leaving town, so part of this is because Karen's leaving town, and she only has like one or two more meetings to work with us.
County's open.
So essentially, she's worried about ongoing work, and I promise you, that's not on your plate. We're just, we're just going to...
What is the ad hoc work group?
It's just to, it's a subcommittee of council, and then it happens to involve Mr. Miller and Ms. Duncan, but it's an accident, Chris, you helped me, I think even before, I might have been on this committee to ask me to do that.
The terrible accident.
Neither one of them was part of ordinance review when they agreed to be part of the ad hoc work group.
Well, it's harder to do.
It's just looking at chapter 154 plus, so essentially, we had a lot of irregularities and legal issues with our chapters 154 plus, and they were given to K3s for any number of years, actually. And then after about like eight months or so of the present council, which is actually the previous council now, they decided to take them back from K3s because there wasn't substantial progress, and they created an ad hoc work group to work on those chapters. Now, that group didn't actually get started until January of this year because of holidays and...
It's similar, Randy, to our ad hoc group, isn't it? It does a lot of the background.
Our subcommittee.
Subcommittee, that's...
Chapter 154, it's like, so this, the 154 plus is subdivision, zoning, site development, and it now involves two new chapters covering ETJ and, what do we call it, water pollution and abatement? Just pollution, we called it environmental, but that's catchy word, so, now it's pollution and abatement. So why this is relevant for your committee is that when looking at things to present for council, you can skip those chapters right now, because they are in a big update part of it.
Okay, moving on, at 258, let's open up a workshop to discuss possible revision of chapter 93, fire prevention and detection. Okay, the document you need to work off of is the one labeled chapter 93 revised text. And again, I emphasize that the original text is still there, it's in black, and our changes are in either red or green. Starting at the top, we took out the reference to chapter 94, health and sanitation, because the fire safety buffer that was in that chapter was removed, so it no longer needs to be referenced. Under the RSC rule, it's just a matter of funny wording, we took out necessary to and, and just get permishes information, which was also changed where it says, it's archaic wording, within the corporate limits of said city, we just changed it to within the city's corporate limits. Moving on, if anyone else has something they'd like to bring up, please interrupt me.
I'm sorry, are you on the 94 or...
93.
Okay, in the title, this wording was added because a discussion was made that in the various titles of the different ordinances, there's different wording. We decided that we would create one wording for all the ordinances so that they are all our common. So we added...
We recommend.
We recommend.
We recommend.
Cited and commonly referred to, added to, this subchapter shall be known as the open burning.
So some places we found commonly referred to under title, other places we found, other places we found, oh, let's go on them together.
Very good.
There's, I mean, there's a, there's a built-in redundancy in Legal East. In fact, they're trying to cover all eight of them, but... Then down at the bottom of the definitions of trash, I just made anything one word, or we just recommended anything to one word.
You think that's a typo?
No. Could we discuss open burning for that question?
Sure, absolutely.
Sure. My reading there, looks like a covered fire pit is considered open burning. Well, it, it does allow, later it does specifically allow for a fire pit. And it defines, in the ordinance, it defines that the absent a burn man, small fires are permitted in residential fire pits, or chimeneas, provided. And then it goes on to describe it, so later on, it says specifically that... So is charcoal grill open burning?
Definitely, yeah.
And actually, anything that's not specifically approved by a fire marshal is considered open burning?
Well, the fire marshal, city marshal, and all city officials have a grand authority, and absent a burn man, small fires are permitted, so... Is it thinking about barbecue?
It does, and it probably should, to be honest, because that's just as much of a fire hazard.
How about a smoker? Smokers completely enclosed, is that open?
Sometimes they're electric, too.
You can, you want to add smoker, or individual barbecue grills? Isn't it true that we, well, at least, I think, open burning is something that's in an unenclosed container? Right? If it's in an, if it's in an enclosed container, it's not open burning, to my thinking.
Okay, so Texas, this is CTEQ, open burning is allowed when it's solely for recreational or ceremonial purposes in the non-commercial preparation of food or explicitly as a means of generating warmth and...
Yeah, we don't need, then we're removing cat fires. Do you want to do that?
Just remember that the fire marshal permits all of these uses except for an a burn man, and during a burn man, these are prohibited, it is actually prohibited to have a fire even at your house during that time, even small ones.
Even charcoal.
Well, and the grill situation is a little bit debatable, but my aunt's house burned down from their grill, just being honest, that just happened last year.
How about a stoner?
Sometimes they're electric, I mean, you guys can add the things that you think are needed in here, but grills are as dangerous as fire pits.
Yeah, but I don't think we're meant to eliminate barbecue grills or smokers for individual use.
There's a document that I just found on Texas A&M agro line, I'm trying to forward it to you, you have a lot of talk, my eyes don't see it. Karen, where is it? Texas agro, hang on, this is, I'm missing it. Open, burn, burn, open burn. It's Texas A&M agro line extension, open burning rules and regulations, and I don't, I'm looking for a day, but I can't find the line.
Does it look like this on the screen?
It does, you're good. I'm just kind of trying to see if it... Agro...
Which section are we looking at?
Well, I'm just kind of trying to scan it to see if there's a different definition than the one in our thing. General Rules, Texas.
Texas Open Burning Rules and Regulations.
Where'd you find, is that the, I just don't see a date, or I can't read the date, 11th of 2021... Or I can't read the date, eleventh of twenty twenty-one, okay. That's more helpful. Not only do they know if these are the right people, but this is just, it may be there's something in the state or marginal rules.
I'm looking at the Hayes County rules right now, the first thing I found essentially said grills are considered open burning. Because you, you have a flame that is open. And so I think where we're getting stuck on is the idea that open burning can't happen if there's some sort of containment, which is not accurate. The, the difference is an incinerator, which is a completely enclosed flame versus a flame that is open to the air to some degree. Or the legal definitions I'm finding anyway. Would it be?
Well, I think, I think, again, we're focusing on the definition of open burning, but if you go to ninety-three eighteen B, number three. Maybe we should expand that.
Could we? Why can't we? Yeah, I think that's what we ought to do, is just say residential fire pits, comma, barbecue pits, smokers or chimeneas provided, because you've got all the rules here. You can stick in barbecue pits after all those, everywhere it says fire pit or chimenea, because, you know.
So, Comal County has, so here's the ordinance that you could consider. Comal County excludes barbecue pits that are off the ground with a lid during burn bans. So that's the language you could use. So, you know, all this stuff that's prohibited during the burn ban, and then you could create another thing that basically says above, you know, lifted barbecue pits and smokers with lids are exempted from the burn ban.
Well, do I?
So I'm on the Pace County Fire Marshal now, because I'm not sure this is going to help it. So, our code compliance, no permit is required for residential outdoor burning. Burn ban is currently off, predicted like last year.
It's my understanding that during a burn ban, which is the county's that all, all pits are not allowed. There's no outdoor, right? Isn't there, I, I have a, uh, question here.
Want me to pull that up, the rules for outdoor burning according to Hayes County?
Oh, we found them?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, yeah, please, man.
What's your question? Where it says open burning, you know, at the top, oh, yeah, lawful, et cetera, et cetera. And then it says, Fire Marshal, open burning, B one, open burning within the city's declared to be a public nuisance and hazard to joint property. Open burning is prohibited at all times when the burn ban has been declared. Absent a burn ban, I had sort of conflicting, because I mean, open burning's not allowed ever. Not just when a burn ban has been declared. But makes people think, well, you might be able to open burn if there isn't a burn ban. And then there's this list below it, but it, it shouldn't say open burning is prohibited at all times when a burn ban has been declared. It should say open burning is prohibited at all times, right? We're not allowed to have open burning ever, or are we? No.
No, that's a solid point, I think that goes back to Randy's concern over the definitions. There should maybe be an additional definition here that segregates out open burning, like a brush. And then the idea that your personal fire pit is different. If you look at these definitions that, um, Ms. McKinsey printed out, they're, they're a little bit more helpful. We could consider some of these sort of subcategory, you know.
What if in open burning definition, we noted, uh, this does not include barbecue grills or smoking, individual smoker. Chimeneas, et cetera. What do you think, Ren?
There's a size of tip, number eight, I mean.
You have good eyes.
Oh, you can zoom it in.
I'm kidding.
Ah, the recreation and ceremony, that's a bonfire.
Oh, yeah, okay.
Yeah, it says no greater than three feet and two feet in height. Yeah, so this is where I was getting at, that you could work on the definitions a little bit, because it says no permit is required for campfires. Non-commercial preparation of food, supplying work and ceremonial purposes, recreational, no greater than three feet in diameter and two feet in height. And that is kind of different than open burning, even though it is still open burning. What you want to prohibit at all times is the burning of trees, brush, leaves, tires, uh, garbage, oils. That are, you know, those are two different types of open burning.
So, again, do you want, do we want to add that definition or?
I would see if we can find a different name possible, I mean, it's recreation and ceremony.
Please, later says.
The hero. I can see.
That is that, it's, it's a larger argument that we all can see, for someone's.
I mean, there's a lot of great language here that could improve sort of the clarity of this.
Well, it seems like we definitely don't want to have a big, like this brush that's stacked up all around the golf course. Definitely don't want that to be burned. And anything other than, anything that's uncovered, even, even a campfire, I mean, do we want to have campfires? What campfires, they're uncovered, they're, yeah. No, that's open burning, I, I, I think we need to be careful, that's my opinion about campfires, because. I think that's different than a fire pit, that you have a metal container, as it, as it's defined in here. Metal sides or whatever. A campfire can be right on the ground.
No greater than, but you're, yeah, three feet, I think so.
Well, it seems dangerous to me because it's not covered, sparks could, or, or if it's a fire pit covered, it's much, much safer.
So, if you don't cover your barbecue.
Yeah, but fire, fire pit covers, I have one, the screen.
Yeah, because the first shoe.
Sparks still come out of the screen when I.
Yeah.
All the sparks, I don't like this, it gets kind of murky territory here.
It's not for, the covers aren't for the sparks, it's for like, uh, like stuff falling out, yeah. But other cities require, um, fire to be conducted and off-ground, can contain things with a, uh, like a grate over the top. That's not, it also prevents things from falling in it, that's not a crazy idea to consider for the city.
I thought that was the rule here anyway.
So did I.
Because people have asked, and they said it was, you know, a couple, several years ago, I remember there was an issue on next door. And so I kind of put a grid over, they built a fire pit out of a new block, so, back and forth. But this open burning, what is open burning and is it prohibited at all times or is, is fire pit, chimney, are those considered open burning? And confuse people, which is probably why people have that conversation in the next door, that I'm working on. Yeah, chimney is seems kind of dangerous to me, because it's got no covering over the, over the top. That's for sure. Well, they usually have a stack. Yeah, but it's not, it's not great or anything. And it's safer to put them on the ground. Maybe only part of theirs, that it would indicate the size of the fire. They're generally small. And what's, you know, with the, you know, on the ground or not on the ground, it doesn't seem to me that there's any difference. Wouldn't they have to be on the ground? So it says it has to be on a solid, non-flammable surface, rock or brick. Somewhere it says, can't be on the ground.
If already catch your dead grass on fire.
Hold, further down there, smaller, smaller, see. Chimney is placed on a non-combative, under will stand or is elevated, not be placed directly on the ground.
Well, so, so people don't put it on their wooden deck, because it's going to get hot.
And they will catch.
It's under the ground. Yeah, if you put on dry grass, it could be.
Yeah. Catch your grass on fire, your dead grass on fire.
Fireman would tell you that, yeah, you can't, because it gets hot.
And it says, we must have a metal grate on the chimney.
Okay, so, um, our goal is to allow barbecue grills and smokers. How do you suggest we do it? Do we put it, um?
Would you just end the letter and say the non-commercial preparation of food, uh, and with, is allowed?
Why non-commercial?
Because that's your barbecue pits and your smoke.
That's what it says for Hayes County.
That's just, it's in here.
Somebody has a gathering and they have a, um, pit, you know, a big grill thing and their barbecue is in particular. Put that down in the golf course. Well, unless he's charging. Yeah, well, they, he's doing it for Dave. He's getting into commercial, I mean, it's food preparation, I'm not sure.
You're right.
I'm not sure we can address that.
You definitely have the authority to address it, um, for sure. Uh, commercial preparation of food is regulated by other authorities as well, but, um, yeah, I mean, a giant barbecue pit could pose a fire hazard. Usually, the, I think the reason why barbecue pits are often excluded is people are typically monitoring them. And that's what, what, from what I'm reading right now, all of these regulations are built around the concept of like, don't start a fire and walk off. Don't start a fire in a crappy container and walk off, you know? So I think that's why you exclude a barbecue pit, but address it, that could be relevant, because there could be times where the city wants.
Well, F and G say it has to be attended at all time, and they have to have the meetings to extinguish it at all time.
That's good.
So.
That's good.
So you're suggesting we add H, which is a discussion of the barbecue pits and smokers?
Well, I, I'd actually put it above, bar must be attended, because you're, what you're talking about, I mean, if you're talking structure of something, you would need to make it, put F and G down, I mean, make it F and then G and H are the fire attendant and the property owner. So, see, or insert it there.
And what would the wording be? What's the suggested wording? Tanner? Which you're going to copy off of Hayes or something?
I'm thinking about, um, fires used solely for recreational or ceremonial purposes, we agree on that. Um, the non-commercial preparation of food, that's your barbecue pit, your smoke or your blah, blah, blah for home use, right?
Yes.
Okay, it covers however you choose to cook outside at home, electric, even gas, whatever, um.
So the non-commercial preparation of food, utilizing a barbecue grill or smoker is allowed?
That's basically what this says.
Except during a burn ban.
Right.
Well, I guess it's three, with all apps in the burn ban.
All of it's apps in a burn ban.
How's that sound?
The county allows, uh, barbecue bits during burn bans, just not to squash your parade.
Did you say the county does?
The county does, so it's just something to keep in mind, yeah. I don't know, I guess the city could be more strict.
Well, then we can.
People burn their fire pits during burn bans here all the time. No, our fire marshal said he depers to the county, so we should probably limit it to the county.
I think that's where his power is derived from, so asking, you would then be asking staff to enforce beyond the fire marshal's power.
You, I don't.
Then you say, you should, so then, or those, the county.
So do we then want to put this before number three? Or?
So.
Or change that wording, apps in a burn ban, small fires.
Maybe you're talking with the wording apps in a burn ban for home, odd fires, see if there's anything in this document, Kelly Burn Ban.
But are you saying during a burn ban, fire pits would be allowed?
And, I mean, I don't know, yeah, so not, I don't know if fire pits are, but it does say that you. Actually, that was Comal County, Comal County said that for sure, this one is a little bit more vague.
I have described predicted dry periods of humidity. May not, burning may not be conducted, especially when they're dry, basically.
Okay, here it goes, it says all burning is prohibited during countywide burn bans, period, there's your answer.
That's Hayes?
Yeah, that Hayes County. Comal makes the distinction, but I think we knock the follow our county.
Right. So we need to keep the absence of burn ban in there?
Yeah, yes.
And we're still talking about small fires, we're just not restricting them to residential fire pit or residential chimeneas, chimeneas. So we're talking about a list of small fires, that's two of them, and we're just extending the list.
What if we gutted this whole ordinance and said, oh, something like burning is dis, is illegal except for specific cases. And specific cases would be barbecues of a small size, we could define what that size is. And also apps in a burn ban, so the idea being that when there's a burn ban, there can't be any kind of burning, like or not. And open burning is, is limited to, um, the burning in general, open or not, is limited to small sizes. Like a barbecue grill or a chimney. Seems, seems like that would be a much simpler solution of this, rather than tack it on score, exceptions to exceptions.
In your current ordinance, as it stands, open burning is allowed in the city, like the golf course could burn those pills with a permit from the city, so, uh, that's what this says right now, with a permit from the city or the part of. Um, it says, well, the current existing ordinance has no permit required at all. The, beyond, yeah. You would likely need to clear it with. You would likely need to clear it with the fire marshal depending on the size. The new proposed ordinance creates a permit for open burning, a brush. Um, but as Randy has shared concern over, is that actually something that Wood Creek would like to permit or not?
But is the golf course can do that, but they don't need a permit?
According to our current ordinance, it looks like they could absolutely do that. Um, that they just need permission from the city, but there's no permit. Or this is for governmental entity, sorry, no, it says it's unlawful unless you're doing it in a device. Yeah, so it's like, okay, could they dig a pit?
No, it defines incinerator.
Uh, and then, yeah, I don't know, it's kind of confusing, and then like T C Q says, no, you can't burn like that inside city limits in general.
An incinerator designed and constructed for such purpose and having a written permit issued by the fire marshal. So that's how our ordinance reads.
So now even this is in conflict then, because then it says that you can get a permit from the city.
But it's for governmental entities.
That's for number, or letter A.
So where are you?
A. It says this is unlawful unless you have a permit from the city, right? So that's what we're added. So that's what I'm saying, you're, you're creating a loophole where it's allowed. So that's, your comment was, do we even want to allow it at all? Is that something that would be safe for Wood Creek? We don't have fire. Uh, hydrants. We have watch valve, that's it.
But if it's funny, I think that could be regulated by the. The city manager.
Right, they, they, they have, as the fire chief said, they have water. And they can provide it on the side. So like a permanent decision.
Yes, they do contain it, they don't, they can make a container.
All this complexity made me want to look for a simple solution, and that would need to list the specific. Cases, specific types of fires that you do allow. Um, and there's really just a few of them, one is by permit. And another is asking a burn ban with a small size, small in size. There may be one or two others that you want to add.
Isn't that what this ordinance does currently?
Well, my gosh, it's, it's got so many points in there, I mean, we, we can't even understand it ourselves.
Yeah.
Well, I would get rid of ninety-three eighteen where it says A, it shall be, shall be unlawful all the way, and then just stop after the word city. Because it's not, city's not an operator, is it? Nobody's gonna be allowed.
Yeah, right. The city, haven't we had instances already, or?
No.
Not that I know, I mean, I can say probably very few of our properties are large enough in size to have a, the next door neighbor was trying, but it was what was. We actually did have somebody do that and there were complaints.
So our next door neighbor.
So are you saying you don't want to, even with the fire marshal permitting it?
Uh, I don't, yeah, my opinion's not relevant here, I think that you're operating in a small city with small lots. With limited fire response capacity, and that those would be the things that reg, that. I would personally use in any sort of update for this ordinance, and yeah, I would base. Our regulations, I would start with what the most basic permitted from the county and then consider. Dropping down from there, because you know, the county regulates fifteen acres in addition to quarter of their lots.
Okay, okay, so let me ask the committee. Do you want, the suggestion that's been made to put a period within the city to simply eliminate all. Next door burning and, and not to allow permanent exception?
I, I would, yeah, that's my suggestion. No one's gonna let trash burn next door to their house.
All right. Randy?
I, I, I think, I think it could be allowed with a permit. As long as the city manager, you know, is judicious and creating permits. And maybe, maybe we need to lay out what are the expectations for a permit, like when is. Approval from the fire marshal.
Well, I'm sure the fire marshal would make sure that there's like water on site to extinguish and be limited, I mean.
Or, or the permit will be part of that.
Can you envision the time where you would permit?
So it's, look on page four of the.
You can tell the letter. It would have to be fun that for me to, uh.
That's what we're doing.
On page four, uh, what we just received, um, number four in red. Um, yeah, so to go back to where it starts. Other burning. Effective, it's.
Yeah, so look at this definition though, it, it distinguishes trees, brush, grass, leaves. And then you look at our ordinance and then it's like garbage. Sick, I mean, you're kind of, are you just construction materials? Can I take down my fence and start burning it in my backyard? You know, so I think practical regulation of, of what makes sense here. If you're gonna allow it, you want to probably set some sizes, you want to set some water access requirements, you want to set requirements about it being monitored twenty-four. Seven T C Q says if there's open, if you're doing a large brush burn, it has to have twenty-four hour monitoring and. Um, depending on the size, it has to be by a, uh, fire fighter. So just.
To me, we live in a housing edition. Nobody wants open burning, I wouldn't even put open burning on the vacant lot next to my house. I mean, it's just too dangerous. And it doesn't take little few sparks to hit her up and just hit her right with an old one, and you go.
Okay, these two say no, what are you saying, Karen?
I say no.
Um. I. Say no.
Completely.
So what this is referencing, if you go forward all the way back, my understanding is, um. That is, if you don't have pickup, but I'm not sure, I mean, I'm struggling on this, but. My preference would be not to burn, for my next burner, not to burn my house down, and they were trying to burn some of their limbs from. The breeze, not realizing it'll take a few years for them to be dry enough to, to actually burn, but, um.
Plus you breathe into the.
Yeah, yeah.
It's very healthy.
Yeah.
Maybe it's just wood.
Especially in you, you know, I've been in places where construction people burn their. Red door stuff, and you, we just don't.
Okay, so let's move on. The consensus is to put a period after the city. And not even allow, um, permit burning.
And that's, that's one of those things the city staff has to deal with.
Let me go back to the new F. Non-commercial preparation of food.
Is that substituting, a fire must be attended all times or?
No, it's, uh, that's becoming G and the one below picking the H. Non-commercial preparation of food utilizing a barbecue grill, smoker. Or individual device?
I think that's it.
What are you doing, Joe? Yeah, I, I.
I think we need to.
What's the purpose of non-commercial?
You're not selling hot dogs in your, up the curve.
So.
That should be regulated in a different way.
Yeah.
Commercial food production is.
That's in the, yeah, talking about regulating.
Uh, no, you're saying if you're cooking hot dogs in your backyard, Wood Creek allowed that. As long as there's not a burn ban in effect. But you, if you're gonna start selling hot dogs, there's a whole other mess of regulations beyond your fire pit.
Yeah, so why do you have to say that? Fire is for commercial.
Because if we don't, someone will fall back on it saying, I'm allowed to sell hot dogs in my front yard. Because it says here, preparation of food utilizing a barbecue grill. So if we don't say that, someone's gonna say, I'm allowed to open up a hot dog scene.
I think we're also just copying the language used by the county.
I think it's good to copy the language used by the county.
So in my, just to make sure I'm clear, that if it's a Friday afternoon and there's a burn ban on, I can't go outside and cook hot dogs.
According to the county, no. According to the county. But it says on this, that boy.
Look, it's a gas grill, it's a gas grill, it could be allowed, it would be.
I don't think so. Now, it says all burning is prohibited during countywide burn bans unless authorized under special permit from the county fire marshal.
So don't burn your hot dogs. How about charcoal, is charcoal considered wood?
It is, yeah, I mean, this, that's all considered. During a burn ban. That's what the county says.
People do it all the time, obviously.
Because here they talked about prohibited material on the front line, and then on the back, it talks about outdoor burning, but it doesn't mention. Barbecue grill.
Outdoor, in the definition of outdoor burning, it was mentioned that includes barbecue.
It just, it doesn't, in that statement, now, I haven't gone on and found the county rules, this is a brochure summarizing them. But in that statement, it's very clear, it says all burning, it doesn't say all burning except your barbecue. Right? I mean, am I misreading this?
No, it's all, um, as far as I understand, it's all burning, I've asked before.
I personally would not call a smoker open burning.
But the county doesn't even use those same definitions.
You're saying all burn.
It says all burning, and it talks about the different types of burning. And it says the only ones you don't need a permit for are the smaller ones. But during a burn ban, I mean, yeah, it looks like all of it is banned. Which again, I'm learning here, this is. News to me, um. I can try to find the actual county regulations, see if they're more specific, because this is just a brochure, you know, it's not.
We also should add prohibited items, burn items in some way to this, one, this part of the ordinance. Because what if somebody wants to burn some of these items in their.
All right. Y'all were talking about T E C Q earlier, this is a T E C Q, a larger T E C Q document. Specifically for outdoor burning, and on one of their pages. It talks about, um, exceptions to regulation. Uh, these aren't that, that even allow it, and then, um. I can open it up for you, but I.
I've read this, because when we were dealing with the brush pickup, there was some discussion about the idea that. We could burn, eh, but we couldn't burn it in city limits, we would have went out, called it a long distance because of the air quality thing, right? We're talking about, you can't burn large amounts. I mean. I think starting with the county's regulations. Whatever the county says would be. This place to start.
Okay, we need to move on.
Yeah.
Uh, so. This is what I have so far, is the changes other than those indicated. Um, on ninety-three eighteen. There's a period after city per sentence, so that basically open burning is. Or the description of burning garbage, trash, whatever. And that would cover you for a fire pit, because it basically says you can't burn these things.
All right, that's right. Yeah, I forgot when I said that.
Then, then the other is, um. We added F, non-commercial preparation of food utilizing a barbecue grill, smoker or individual device. F was, the lower F was changed to G, and the G was changed to H. Now, on that last one, uh, we had, uh, which is the new H, the property owner, we added or the fire intended. In other words, somebody has to be there, may not be the owner of the property. Has the means to extinguish the fire at all time, not just one that.
Is that, are you printing this whole thing?
Yes.
Were there were copies?
Yes. And I'm gonna grant it because I finally got the section I was trying to say, um, on T E C Q, it says, they allow the. Like y'all were talking about.
During a burn ban now, does it specify? Because yeah, I don't know what the relationship is with like, can the county.
Including during the burn ban.
But that's the whole tech, the whole state, so like, Colmell County allows them, Hayes County, we still haven't found their regulations, right? Yeah, so would every time I go to click on the Hayes County regulations, oh, it doesn't pull up the brochure. It's just like.
And E and Colmell and Hayes are both tapping portions of T.
Yeah, yeah, so that's what I'm saying, the state has regulations and it says barbecues are fine. Colmell County says barbecues are fine during a burn ban, Hayes County appears not to. So we would, because we're in Hayes, technically need to align with that.
Well.
And that's what our current code does, it just doesn't mention barbecuing for some reason, which is.
And now we're selling more things like Randy's smoker. I'm feeling Randy has a problem.
No, I don't.
Oh.
A lot of people do.
Sure, yeah. Here's another brochure, okay, why don't they just link you to their actual code?
So the only issue we have outstanding is what happens during a burn ban to our barbecue grill.
Our home, the things under the home allow the, the grills, the, whatever, the food preparation, the ceremonial stuff.
Here, on this brochure, it says the same thing, it says open burning is prohibited unless these circumstances. And then on the right, it says all burning is prohibited during burn bans.
But now what if you have somebody who has an outdoor kitchen?
So this is, but it addresses it, it says general things that are allowable, and it mentions. Non-commercial food preparation, right? And then on the right hand side, it goes back to all burning is prohibited during burn bans. This is another brochure from the county, fire from the.
Synopsis of the.
Yeah, and like, so look, this is a brochure directed to the fire marshal this time. Instead of the, yeah, so it's just another version of this, and it says the same thing.
Says all outdoor burning or just all?
It says, outdoor burning is not permit, permitted without a permit, with these few exceptions and not. No, so it's just in general, and it gives you a few exceptions, and it says non-commercial food preparation and small campfires. And then it says, and then all burning is prohibited during a burn ban.
Right.
So I mean, to me, it seems pretty clear. I don't know, I mean, the thing is, is. Yeah, how are we gonna enforce it?
Oh.
This is pretty intimidating. A bad storm knocked down a lot of trees and we burn it, and it says, not really, but in special cases, T E C Q. They authorize that if there's no practical alternatives. You know, the special, once-in-a-lifetime kind of thing, that's how we ought to operate. To me, that makes more common sense than having, trying to cover all the exceptions in our rule. No banging, no burning, that's a good rule, but if you have some special situation. Then you could.
Do you, you're making that suggestion for, like, essentially A?
No, 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 I like what we have here. Okay, that's what I'm saying, that's how we ought to operate. Once-in-a-lifetime things, you can step outside your, the government can step outside the rules if they need to. Let's go, let's have this solid rules, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. So, no, I think what you got here is good.
You're, you're basically saying, don't put the once-in-a-lifetime thing in, if there's a once-in-a-lifetime situation, maybe make a.
Exactly.
I agree.
Once-in-a-lifetime things, you can step outside your, the government can step outside the rules if they need to. Let's go, let's have this solid rules, ninety-nine point nine percent of the time. So, no, I think what you got here is good.
You're, you're basically saying, don't put the once-in-a-lifetime thing in, if there's a once-in-a-lifetime situation, maybe make a.
Exactly.
I agree.
Maybe, if you go on and on, now, what do you have?
Right, right, right.
You know? No. Okay. So, we're agreed, do we need a motion, or?
No, I'm gonna close the workshop if you guys have been.
Yes.
Okay. All right, at, um. Three forty-nine, closing the workshop. Now. Since the city staff will go ahead and type up all these changes. I guess the option is to read the changes, and those can be finalized and revoked.
At the very least, you could just restate them for them to ensure that they have good notes.
So let's, uh, do you wanna make a motion to? Move it to next one?
I'm making a motion that we move this to next month with a copy that we can finalize.
Like, Anderson, keep putting, I need to say about that.
Would you please restate your changes for staff to ensure that. Yeah, they have them?
Sure. Um. They're the ones indicated on the color sheet. Which you have a copy of, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay, in addition, on nine-three point eighteen. Setting, uh, first paragraph A. The first sentence ends at city with a period. And all subsequent text and names removed. And then. Uh, F, there's a new F, which says, non-commercial preparation of food utilizing a barbecue grill, smoker, or individual device. Do we, do we need to put a verb in there, are, are allowed or?
You're allowed, your verb is up above. Permit, it's our, yeah.
Well, wait a minute, it says. Oh, yeah, you're right, okay, and then, uh, F would be changed, the lower F would be changed to G, and then H. That's it?
Yep.
Okay. Go ahead, Anderson, ready to go up, moving on?
I have a question, there was some discussion of we are definitely for open burning, did y'all ever reach any? At, at one point, there was a proposal in that item, some of the definitions.
I don't.
Okay.
Yes, you got it.
Remember that Hector? Yes. Remember Randy Renter?
Yeah.
Jefferson James Ryan?
Yes.
Vice Chair DeRaco?
Yes.
Member Carrigan?
Okay, uh, um. Three fifty-two. We're opening a workshop to discuss possible revision of chapter ninety-four fireworks. The text we're working off is the chapter ninety-four of the body test. Again, under title, we added cited and prominently referred to. Then down to definitions. We simply eliminated. We eliminated, uh. Brand names, or, I don't even know a gerb, either. I mean, the definition, we checked the definition of Wimberly. And Wimberly, uh. Has. It's funny, because they list individual things like firecrackers, skyrocket, torpedo's, and then they go on to say. All substances in whatever combination and by whatever name. Which are intended for use in obtaining visible or audible effects, so, uh. We didn't think those were necessary, I think we can leave them in, but, uh, it, it. Go ahead.
All right, so what you have on the circular paper is, after I read this two or three times, the definition, I had a headache. It is a, it is a run-on sentence. Which I spent my freshman year in college trying to learn not to do. So, what I did on the circular paper is, I took out some of the words that I thought were redundant. Or said again, and I made it into two sentences, which I, I thought made it a little bit clearer. I did not change any kind of, uh, definition or, um. Anyway, so what's in red, should, I would take out. And leave the green that you had in, which is fine. And, but, all of that seemed to me to be just un, unmuted, not needed, but what I put in, what I put in red on the slip. So.
Yeah, it is already, it's one of those long legal sentences.
Right.
Uh, just so you know, in whatever combination. I found that confusing also, but it was in all the other definitions of fireworks. If you look at the state.
Well, you, y'all had the access to other sources, and I didn't, so I, I just.
But it's still, if you, um, took and put after pyrotechnics, the A, the period, and then put. Such term shall include, then you have done a technically run-on sentence, right?
So, and you, and you've also dealt, that, that sentence also deals with whatever combination by designated. But it says, such terms shall include all articles or substances within the commonest accepted manual fireworks.
Okay, I'll do that.
So, that's. Why you're leaving Roman candles and sparklers, but picking out, like, fire balloons?
Skyrockets.
Torpedoes, I'm sorry, what is that?
I mean, you have the hollow rockets. Does anyone know what a gerb is?
No, no, and I'm not gonna look these all up. But I do know what fire balloons are. They are often, like, you.
What is that?
This definition in the Texas state statutes.
Right, that, that, I had that. Um, their first line is very all-encompassing, but then they go on to definitions, the problem with their definition. Is they classify all different types of fireworks. Because they're dealing with production, transportation, and sale, which, which we are not. So, I mean, you can either go there, very simple fireworks, one line definition, or.
So I just wanted to go back to the, I was kind of asking what the, the idea between leaving Roman candles and sparklers. Versus taking the others out, I guess it's because they're not really always seen as the same as fireworks, right? You might buy sparklers for your kids and think they're permitted. I would suggest you consider leaving fire balloons, though, because those are available for sale year-round. So it's, they're lanterns, they're fire lanterns. So, yeah, and they're really, really dangerous, but they're, like, available for sale year-round, they aren't necessarily sold in fireworks stands. And, um, basically, you light a flame under a balloon and then let it go into the air. And it's supposed to burn out before it catches on anything, but at, when we were, we were at an event, and one of them. Went straight into a tree at Kirkville, Randy, over an RV. And we were flipping out, trying to get it out, it was like a year, somebody brought a bunch of them, and they were being released. It was actually my birthday, and then there, a fire broke out in a tree over an RV because of one of those balloons. And it's not Fourth of July.
And then it's kind of a name, the fire lantern, I can look up what's some of their better names, but I would just suggest.
That's like the Thomas Park, I've never heard of. So, so you, so basically, Donna's definition is okay if we add fire balloon.
I'm trying to look up what their name is.
Well, I had the current, the current, um, you know, ordinance says fire balloon.
Sky lantern.
Okay, well, we could put fire balloons and or, you know, print skylanterns in the states as fire balloons, we can put like, the common name.
Does the state say fire balloon? Because of, fire balloons, it's balloons that look like fire.
I'll read the state.
Sky lanterns are.
The state says fireworks means a composition or device. Designed for entertainment to produce a visible or audible effect by combustion, explosion, deflagration, or detonation. And, then it goes on, um, the different large fireworks. Uh, one point three.
One point three, the one point four.
One point four G, it goes on all their, um, whatever. But if you take that first fireworks and, and A. They're basically, they do not name any specific type of fireworks. They just say if it's designed, because your lanterns are designed, uh. To create a, a visible. Uh, pyrotechnic display, correct?
Absolutely, I, my suggestion was just, if you're going to designate Roman candles and sparklers. Sky lanterns would be one, I think you would wanna highlight, because like sparklers, people might not think, oh, this is a firework.
That's why, yeah, we left it in, because we may not think it's fireworks. I think sparklers do more damage.
That was the only fireworks my mother would ever let us have, sparklers. And then, as we're all grown up, she called, said, sparklers are the most dangerous thing she could give to children. Well, they get up to, they can get up to two thousand.
Well, it's dangerous when they have bad kids.
Anyway.
So, so getting back to this, uh, any objection to using, um. Donna's, uh, description, but we add, um. Was it? Fire star.
Sky lantern.
Sky lantern. He think of that song.
The sky lanterns, the term they use, do not meet the definitions of fireworks, but we're, I like putting it in there. Because it isn't a major combustible thing, but it is productive. And I, I know I've seen it in one children's movie, where they're released, so.
Well, it's great over water, but.
They released over water, but.
Um, in that first, I meant definition, um, we added more device to coincide with other wording. First, did not have that in. I added, we added witches, intended, and I think especially in the last sentence, there's a misspelling. They're supposed to be specifically, so we changed that.
I don't know why, we need to know with person, but we accept that.
Dropping down to restrictions, rules of authority, law enforcement, just in case anyone wonders, the city manager is the fire marshal.
No.
Yeah.
He's got a badge. That doesn't mean he's turning. I do have a badge. Yes, it's ceremonial, he did say he defers to the county, like any other fire marshal. Yeah. Well, it impressed me, before that badge, it looks pretty good, yeah.
While you're grilling your hot dogs.
I was thinking more of in the dance hall.
Oh.
Also, we changed this one complaint, may be filed in the county courts, since we do not have a municipal court yet. Correct. Goes into time, date, location, and first in charge. Provided, however, that, uh, we just changed, made a new sentence with capital P, this division.
It's a weird word, but that's why it was stated.
Shall not be construed as requiring such a complaint for the force of chapter. May be authorized by the city or fire marshal. On the public despite, because I think he issues permits for, like, Camp Dune to have.
The fire marshal.
And that's very exact, and it's on his list, it was like, Charlie's been a marshal of the fire.
And also, we changed print application, forty-eight hours, we changed that to ten days, to coincide with the application, which says ten days prior.
I, I think that's a good. That's the fire marshal would be happy with.
And that was it, anybody else have anything?
Yeah. D, the second, the final section there? I think, I think we should define who the city is, there's the city manager, the city staff. The mayor, probably wearing. A lot of displayed fireworks may be authorized by the city. By the city or fire marshal, who is that, should we say city manager?
Who, who signs off on the permits, put them in?
The fire marshal signed off on them, and then we just went, who, like, C Y J now, hey, the fire marshal whipped it over. And we staffed the word approved on it, and it's it.
You mean the real fire marshal?
Yes, the real fire marshal actually gets the detailed plan from Camp Dune to have.
And then it's communicated by the city.
Correct, they send us back the permit, and then we get back to C Y J.
Okay, so we, the city doesn't authorize it, but the city communicates.
Correct.
Yeah, we're middle man.
Anybody ever applied for a permit to allow fireworks in their backyard?
No.
No.
I mean, but.
That wouldn't be committed, there is a detailed, very, very detailed scale of graphs and diagrams, because you have to have a fallout scope. Fallout. Uh, pattern, and all this other stuff with certain amount of heat and everything. And all that is provided to the fire marshal, which, which, uh, fills with the Hayes County code. It's, yeah, it's a very detailed. So, so we're changing, uh, our green text, which says city or, we're changing that to county.
So we're changing, uh, by the green text, which says city or, we're changing that to county.
By the fire marshal.
County fire. The county fire marshal.
Do we need to take the one then below that, which is the city also? It should be the duty of the city or fire marshal to make an investigation.
Yeah. Do you guys investigate, or?
Yes, investigating fires.
You'd have the county.
Right.
It's good on fire. So how is, how is the, the camp to get appropriate, appropriate fire and relation out? I'm passing that thing down.
Uh, they, they submit all the requirements to Ace County Fire Marshal, and they through them. I don't think the fireworks are the same as a open fire on the ground. Um, that's why, as you look in that diagram, there's certain feet that you have out for the fallout scatter, and that there's certain limits on when you can light up those fireworks, that if the wind is a certain, uh, more than twenty-two miles an hour, those fireworks cannot be, um, set off, because that would push those fireworks outside of the radius of the fallout of the, um, fireworks.
I believe the county issued a different ban for fireworks as well, that's my memory.
It's not, it's not the same as a, as a burn ban on the ground for fireworks. And it is the fire marshal, if, if, let's say the wind was high, they would come down and shut down the fireworks. It'd be their responsibility, and they also go out there, I believe, where they should be out there, and they should be checking the structure, to make sure that where they set off fireworks is secure. That's another thing that you have to do, you have to make sure that nobody can get around those fireworks for, for safety. There's a bunch of, it's, it's a very detailed process to set off fireworks with that scale, so you shouldn't worry. You shouldn't worry, you cannot go out there and buy a bunch of fireworks, let them fall off. But I guess you could, and we'll get to it.
Not here in Wood Creek, anyway. On, uh, on letter C under ninety-four dot oh four, you wrote in county courts, and the language we've been using is court with appropriate jurisdiction.
So then if municipal court ever came back?
Yes, but also it prevents, uh, trying to take it to some other court, but even like, you know, the county courts might not hear it, because they might decide this doesn't fall under our jurisdiction. The court with appropriate jurisdiction is what we've been seeing in, um, some of the other ordinances we're replicating, so.
So, a sworn combined may be filed in the court with appropriate jurisdiction.
In a court, yeah, a, a court, because there could be more than, I think it's the phrase, a court with appropriate jurisdiction.
Would it be B?
I think in other ordinances, I've seen this in some of the recent ordinances.
I see semantics, B implies a singular, A implies option.
I don't know.
Uh, at this point in time, yeah, but, um.
I think it always is A, but I can be hushed to reading, and it's very.
Well, D is singular, so it implies there's only one single court with jurisdiction, and there might not be. Especially, you have to also, like, what if this event impacts outside of Wood Creek, right? That's an awful thought, but then there could be more than one court where something is filed in.
We stay away from penalty, we figure that between city, uh, and county. It's successful, two thousand dollars a day.
Not to exceed. So there, yeah, and, I don't know, I mean, there's a whole ordinance out there, hopefully, that somebody somewhere, dressed, I think, but I don't think us changing it makes a difference.
Any other discretion on that? Okay, at four eleven, we'll close the workshop. And once again, you can make a motion to have staff pick up the, uh, the final draft, and vote on it next week, next month.
And if that, we can never change the staff to be, um, formatted and typed, you know, telling the committee next month.
A second. Any comment?
Remember Randy Renter?
Yes.
Jefferson Jim Miller?
Aye.
Vice Chair Joe Branko?
Yes.
Remember Karen Nigby? Remember Don Hector?
Yes.
Okay, um, any, the only announcement I'll make is that next month, we're gonna start animals, so, that includes chickens, so people start thinking about that stuff.
Oh, boy. Y'all have access to the fifteen survey, have you seen it? Would you like me to pull out that chunk about the chickens?
Our role, our, our role is not to say yes or no, the chickens.
Oh, yeah, on the website, yeah.
Yeah, it's on website.
We have a page, I'll, I'll email it to everybody.
We'll be able to make recommendations on different animals and what we think is.
Well, yeah, and I, it's a very long ordinance, and, um, we could use some clarification.
Oh, that's a match.
Ninety-four?
I don't know, what, just what is the number, just.
Ninety?
Okay. Nine, ninety-something, okay.
We're, we're more than proofreaders, right? I mean, we are proofreaders, but we're more than that.
No, you're supposed to give your thing.
So, yeah, if you have time to look at it, please send our chairperson your comments, um, I found it quite long. Cause I tried to pull a few things out of the central ordinances, and I found that very difficult, it's just long and convoluted and difficult. So, um, any comments, so that we don't violate the blah, 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 you can sit.
Animals is ninety.
Ninety, right, thank you. I do have, uh, one citizen has requested, you all consider allowing, uh, falcon.
Falcon, falcons? Oh, wow.
Peppalcons? Is he a falconer? She's a falconer?
He, he, his family and his father-in-law, and he literally came to the farmer's market and just to talk to me in position that we allow falcon.
Or falcons?
They're, I guess, considering nine five animals or something, I don't know. I don't think the ordinance applies, but just a heads up.
They fly overhead.
Um, so there's a lot of, yeah, they don't, uh, you don't, they're kept in cages.
No, I, I, I understand, I actually knew, knew one person with a falconer, uh, yeah, it's a big deal.
Exotic animals, fowls, and reptiles. Also, uh, farm, typical farm animals.
I don't want them mentioned on my call.
Anyways, animal, next, next one.
That's okay, I'm hearing one. To address this ordinance, it's part of the important ordinance. And it's something that impacts a lot of citizens. I heard someone yelling at me about the next door neighbor's dog the other day, I'm like, would you talk to the next door neighbor?
Yeah, the nighttime barking and the off-leash stuff, that's a big thing.
It's a big deal.
There are different ones on that, with processes in place.
I know, I, and it starts with talking to the animal governor. So I, that's what I asked her to do, to.
Yeah, and there's also a barking noise complaint.
I know, but she has to do this service in the board, and I read.
Right, there is a process.
There is a process, that's why I.
I, uh, forgot one portion of, um, my announcement from council, because I emailed, uh, Mr. Miller on the side about this, but essentially, in looking at y'all's guiding ordinance again, as it was established in the last council meeting, that, um, y'all, in your next meeting, should have an item of what things you might want to consider, because essentially, if some, if something's not directly sent to you from council, there's nothing to work on. So if you all would like to request to work on certain items, council could approve it, does that make sense? But if council doesn't directly send y'all something, then in theory, there's nothing to work on, but you all have the authority to make requests. It's a back and forth dialogue, does that make sense?
When we, months and months ago, suggested taking the, the important ordinance list and then doing the big size, did that not get back to council?
It did, and essentially, then there was a conversation about being very specific, and essentially, after animal control, y'all will be done with council's current directive, which was they approved working on the fireworks fire and, um, animal control. So it's like after animal control, y'all might want to have that discussion about what your next steps are, so it can be taken into council, and council can say, yes, we would like you to work on that ordinance. It's kind of a formality, but I just, I don't want y'all feeling like you can't work if you're wanting to work, but the way the ordinance is written is stuff has to be sent to you from council, that's fine.
Okay, we can make recommendations with our liaison.
Yes, it's a back and forth dialogue, we want to facilitate y'all doing what you want.
But we can, can we make those recommendations outside of the meeting?
If you'd like to get them to, to personally, yeah, just remember, you know, forums are more than two of y'all, and you can always email your chairperson about things you want on your agenda, you know?
And I'm, I'm always willing to meet, uh, to discuss what your specifics are, or whatever, you can send me a, a email, or you can. Okay, so let's close the meeting at forty-eight.
There's pie, if you would like pie, keeline, maple, avocado, apple, here.
I am crazy, and I mean, you.
It's actually Emma's fault, but Emma's not here.
Poor thing. I know that has to eat during the meeting, I would have sweetened up. Cause I gotta go to the food bank.
And there's talking for the keeline pie about.
I was reading about keeline.
What, when you email me?
Let me shut the camera.